Okay, I will call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for May 21st, 2018, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the one God, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have a pastor here this evening, so I'll just ask everyone to stand in a moment of silence. Okay, we've got our public hearing for the proposed fiscal 2018-19 budget on first for this evening. Joel Mashburn, our interim county manager, will make a few comments before we open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am here to address— So I can operate just a brief PowerPoint that we have. This is probably not new to most of you, but there may be some people in the audience that have not had an opportunity to review the budget yet. So I just want to quickly go over a few things. This is the proposed budget for 2018, 2019. It is a balanced budget in accordance with the statutes. And if you will look at the first chart that we've got, if it works—here we go, now we got it. As you can see, the revenue for this year is $82,568,889. That is $2 million, almost $2.3 million more than the current year's budgeted revenue. How much we will actually end up with for this current fiscal year, we really don't know until the year is over. We still have sales taxes that will be coming in, we still have property taxes that will be coming in. But based on a comparison between the FY '18 budgeted revenues and what we're projecting for FY '19, it's a little over $2 million difference. I would like to go through some of that real quick. As you can see, the largest portion of the revenue that we receive, which is the large blue or purplish/pink/purplish part of the pie, is the ad valorem taxes, which makes up 53 percent of our revenue, or $43,844,596 is what we estimate that the ad valorem taxes will bring in for FY '19. If you compare that, and that's not on this chart, but doing a comparison between FY ' '18 and what's proposed for FY '19, we're looking at about a little over $700,000 more in ad valorem taxes for the budget year. The next largest piece of the pie is the sales taxes. And as you can see, that's a little over $15 million, and that's a little over $763,000 more than we budgeted for the current year. Other taxes that we receive is over $3 million, $3.5 million, and the majority of that, two-thirds of that, is the occupancy tax. Intergovernmental revenue is over $12 million, that's the next largest piece of the pie. And that, about two-thirds of that, comes through the state government, and that's basically where the money comes from to operate health and social services. Permits and fees, we had a little over $5 million budgeted for that, and just wanted to kind of go over a few of these. Again, these are all estimates, but they're estimates based on good data as it stands for the current year and in projecting that into the next year. Just real quickly going over the expenditures, again, $82,568,889. There's three large pieces of the pie there. The largest piece goes to—the three largest goes to public safety. At 22 percent of the total expenditures go into public safety, over $18 million. Health and Human Services, 22 percent going to Health and Human Services, again, over $18 million. And then for education, if you add the education and the community college together, public education and community college together, you're looking at almost $20 million there. And again, that is—when you add those three up, that's about 75 percent of our budget. And so that means the remaining expenditures for general government, for debt service, for culture and recreation, central services, is less than about 25 percent when you add it all up together. So I just wanted to go over those real quick as a quick overview, some other items that I'd like to point out that's in the budget. The proposed budget attempts to take some positive steps to further recover from the negative impact of the recession. A major factor that is in our favor is the improving economy of the county. Haywood County's unemployment rate is down. We currently are at 5.1 percent, or in February—that's the latest numbers that we had. And tourism dollars and sales tax revenues are up. So we see some positive signs that the economy is recovering and that the county continues to grow in its base, its tax base, its sales tax base, and other revenues coming in. The commissioners' goals that are included in the budget are education, and we see increased funding for the Haywood County schools and for the community college. Facilities and capital outlay, increased maintenance on the facilities that are owned by the county, that was one of the things you expressed concern about, and capital outlay for security, vehicles, and voting machines. Again, the voting machines was in the current year's budget, but we were unable to purchase those this year, awaiting a decision from the state. So that money is carried forward into next year as an expenditure and will come out of the $1.7 million fund balance. Continued efforts for economic development with your relationship that we have now with Buncombe County to do some marketing for us and other consultation that we will be getting from the Chamber there. Now, I would like to talk just a little bit about the pay plan. That was another item that you put in your goal, that you would like to see some improvements in the pay plan for the budget year. So it does include a 1 percent cost of living for all employees, and another 2 percent merit, and that's based on merit, based on evaluations, and then a 1 percent increase in the 401K for everyone except for law enforcement. And the reason it is not included for law enforcement, by statute, we have to have 5 percent in the 401K for law enforcement. So when the county reduced the 401K, when the recession hit, law enforcement was not reduced. It remained at 5 percent. So the attempt is to try to get other employees up to and current with the same as the law enforcement. It'll take a couple more years before we're able to get there, but we're—1 percent a year, we will eventually get it back up to that point. Also, we have a recommendation in this for nine new full-time employees, one part-time position, and to increase a half-time position in the register of deeds office to a full-time position. I could go on, but I think that the main thing that we need to remember is that this is a balanced budget, and it does not increase the tax rate. The tax rate will remain at 58 and 1/2 cents for $100 valuation. The fund balance recommended to be balanced—to balance the budget and to be used is $1.7 million. And so with that, I will turn it back over to the chair to conduct the hearing.
Thank you, Joel. We appreciate that. And now I will open this up—well, we're technically in the public hearing, but now's the time if the public wants to come forward to make comments or suggestions or have questions. We might not answer the questions today regarding the budget, the proposed budget. They may do so now. Now, a few people signed up. That's for the public comment session. I will get to that after the public hearing. So this is just in regards to comments for the budget or concerning the budget. Now, I'll open that up now. You're more than welcome to come forward.
Ted Carr from Bethel. I'll make a comment that's related to school safety.
Ted, this is for the budget.
Right.
If it's concerning—because we got the public comments, it's going to be in a minute. I know you signed up for that. So this is in regards to the budget and school safety in the budget. Okay.
Right.
All right. Just wanted to make sure—
I take this one point to talk about because it is related to school safety, and it's for the SROs, as a third of a million dollars for the SROs. I believe that's for three from the sheriff. Other SROs are furnished by the municipalities. A suggestion would be that we double the number of SROs that the sheriff supplies, not double the budget, because we don't need—for them to all have vehicles. And the reason I'm looking at that is an SRO spends about two-thirds of their time in security issues, and about one-third of the time—you might help me with this stuff— but about a third of the time is spent in administrative issues. There's a student that was out, was acting up, and so they're in the office, and the SRO is talking with the principals and so forth. Also, they're called off-campus for meetings. So if we had two SROs, then they would be on security duty all of the time. And that would increase it some, but I think the percentage would be enough to bear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Anyone else? Commissioners, have any comments or anything you want to add before I close the public hearing?
It was just that, you know, we've had a lot of conversation back and forth the last couple of weeks since this budget was presented, and had a lot of explanations and all. And then we will have a work session Thursday. I think that'll be our time, and we'll sit down and really go into it pretty deep, so...
Yeah, we do have a work session Thursday at—what time is it at?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Paragon.
At Paragon Parkway. If anyone is interested to come there, that's obviously—I mean, that's open to the public as well. And that will be a discussion regarding the budget. Anything else?
Yes, we appreciate the time our staff has put in doing the budget. It's gone very, very smoothly.
Yeah, and I'd just add that, too. I've had some comments from some of the staff and, you know, talked about how positive this—the budget was, and, you know, of course, it always helps when things are a little bit better and you're able to potentially do a few things, too. So anyway, but...
All right. All right, then I will close the public hearing, and we'll move to public comment session. We've got a few folks that have signed up for public comment. I've asked that the speakers, when they come forward, do limit their comments to approximately three minutes. I've got these three folks that I'll call out, and then thereafter, if there's anyone else that would like to speak, you're more than welcome to come forward as well. Samuel Malone. Mr. Malone?
I work with a group down home, North Carolina, and we wanted to ask you if you would consider, please, joining a class action lawsuit or our own lawsuit—or your own lawsuit against the big pharmaceutical companies. I myself have had issues with opioids. I had a knee surgery, and I was over-prescribed the medicine and developed an addiction, which I've worked through. But that's not—it's not a unique story around here. It just seems to be growing and growing, and our neighboring counties have also joined their class-action lawsuits. So we just wanted you to consider that.
Okay. And Samuel, you're with down home, North Carolina. Is that part of the—is that the organization that's in support of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Jeremiah James?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I, too, have about the same story as Sam Hoes, except everybody that I know just about has been affected by this epidemic. And we'd like to ask that you file a lawsuit and hold these companies accountable, just as we would drug dealers on the street, and regain some of our money that we've lost from having people happen to go to the hospital and not be able to pay for it, and just kind of help the county recuperate from some of this. And just ask that you consider filing this lawsuit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah. And then Ted Carr?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my purpose simply to thank you. Thank you very much, and the county manager, Mr. Mashburn, for the attention that you gave to the comments that David Echus and I made a month ago on school safety, taking that to heart, and having Dr. Nolte make the presentation, which everybody can see now. The reason we came forward is people were saying, "We need to have a forum, we need to get a committee together, we need to get on the courthouse steps." And, you know, there was some action down in Hendersonville. Sheriff McDonnell had a meeting. And so people around here would say, "Well, what's the school system doing about the safety?" So the purpose was to get attention, and you did it. You nailed it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. We appreciate you. Anyone else like to speak at public comment that has not signed up? Okay, we'll move to constituent concerns. Mike?
I've had a few concerns that, you know, we're discussing right now. I think, Mr. Chairman, you and I have had that discussion on a couple of them, and we'll be looking into those, and it has to do with some meeting and stuff throughout the county.
Bill?
I don't have any.
Brandon?
I've got a couple. One's a comment, and the other one is a concern. I had some folks that contacted me about the election day polling places, especially the ones that are happening at the schools. And it goes along with the school safety we've been talking about. I know that we have some schools that are open, and we got folks going into those schools voting on those days, and that was just a concern of safety. So there's a group of folks that got together, and they had one guy come to me and talk to me about it. So maybe something we need to look into. I don't know. Seems like when I was small in Bethel, we actually closed school on that day. So I don't know if we need to move those places, or probably just need to look into it and have a discussion about that. So that's one thing. And the other thing, I just found out that this is EMS week, and just like to give special recognition to our EMS workers and what they do on a daily basis, and just let folks know that it is EMS week. If you see one of these guys out doing their job, give them a pat on the back or a thank you, so...
Thank you, Brandon. As far as comments from Mr. James and Mr. Malone, the board has been made aware of that, and there have been discussions either individually with certain groups and as well as the state in regarding that lawsuit and some of the parameters and the factual basis out of it, so—and what can be done. So the county is looking at that. And then, Ted, we appreciate your comments and the fact that we were able to get Bill here, and then unfortunately, it's something that we're going to have to continue to look at because since our last meeting, there was another incident this past weekend. So it's certainly something that we're going to have to be aware of and constantly be prepared to defend. But thank you. All right, next is administrative agency reports. Via Health Physical Monitoring Report, Julie Davis, our finance director.
Good evening. You've got in your packet the quarterly report from Via Health. This is through March 31st, 2018. And you'll notice on the report of budget versus actual, their total revenues, $306,825,141, and their total expenditures through March, $309,346,089, for a total net loss through March, $2,520,948.
Okay, you have any questions of Julie, Commissioners? All right. If not, we'll move to discussion and adjustment to the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda. Request approval of May 7th, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes, corrections to those minutes? If not, request approval of 2018 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Greg West, our assistant tax assessor is here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Evening.
Commissioners. I'm here to request approval of the April 2018 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Pretty much business as usual this past month. Nothing out of the ordinary to report, gentlemen.
All right. Commissioners, have any questions to Greg? All right, thank you, Greg.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll move to request approval of April 2018 tax collections update. Mike Matthews, our tax collector. Mike?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
As of April 30th, our current collection rate, we are at 96.18 percent. It's about 0.43 percent higher than this time last year, and our delinquent balance is at $2,420,354.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mike, next time—I just was—I'm just curious, and I don't know the answer to this, but how do we rank in the state as far as collections, in Haywood County?
In the entire state? I have no idea. We've got a little—the ones that are in our region are right about in the middle of our region for the 17 or so, but as far as state goes, I have no idea. I can look that up, though.
All right. You know, next time, if you could provide that, I'd just like to be able to provide that information.
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of budget amendments. Julie Davis has several. First one's the General Fund, Health and Human Services, Work First Program.
All right. The first one is $9,774, and this is additional federal funds that are coming in, so we are allocating them to the program so we can spend them the way they're required to be spent. The next one is—I'll just go on if that's okay.
That's fine.
Commissioners, if you have a question, you better speak up. Quick, before she goes to the next.
She's on a roll.
That's right.
The next one is public safety. This is $11,427, and this is actually proceeds from gov deals. There were some stretchers that were sold on gov deals for EMS department, and they would like to use these proceeds that weren't—we're not budgeted to come in to replace mattresses and for the current stretchers that they did not sell on gov deals, and to cover digital signage, software, and hardware.
All right, Commissioners? All right, and Julie, the next one?
All right, the next one. This one is a large one. This is $369,875. This is a net budget amendment. What I've done is kind of a year-end cleanup. I bring these to you toward the end of the year. We may have another one in the next month. But what I'm doing is I'm looking at some things that are coming in over budget, and some of them are related to a revenue and some of them are not. For example, the occupancy tax is coming in a little bit higher than normal, which means we have to pay that out to the TDA, and our excise taxes are coming in in register of deeds, and we have to pay 50 percent of that to the state. There are other things that are coming in a little over budget, though, that we did not have revenues for. We are taking—you'll notice on the elections, capital outlay equipment, I'm taking $700,000 out of that department. We had originally budgeted $800,000 for voting machines. We're not going to use that for voting machines, so I'm taking $700,000 of that to help spread to some other items in the budget where we didn't quite have any funds to cover it. You'll notice I've also wiped out contingency, took the $54,718 that was left in contingency, so I took that down to zero. I'm adding $700,000 for health insurance. We're self-insured on health insurance, and those claims are coming in this year quite a bit higher than we had expected. And then you'll see—there are a few other things on that list here. None of them as significant as the health insurance and the occupancy tax and the register of deeds, which have a revenue source. But the other revenues are coming in just a little bit higher. You will notice, though, that I have actually had to appropriate $187,625 of additional fund balance in order to cover all of these. But you'll also notice right before that, fund balance where I have removed loan proceeds we had budgeted last year to borrow some money for the tax software, in the hopes that by the end of the year, we would have some money coming in a little bit stronger, so we wouldn't have to borrow that money and incur interest and have that debt service show up in future budgets. So I've wiped that out. I did have a little bit of sales tax money to help cover part of that. But the rest, $187, is coming from fund balance and all of that nets to $369,875.
Julie, the claims that you said were up this year compared to last year, do you know about how much they were up compared to last year?
It looks like they're between $500,000 and $1 million. They're up quite a bit this year. We have increased our health insurance premium, so to speak, for next year's budget. It's about $850,000, and we've upped it to $1,000 for next year.
Are these claims—I mean, they must be unexpected for this year?
Yes, they are unexpected. Accidents are always unexpected. There's a variety. There's multiple people who are covered and dependents who have some high claims.
So what you're trying to do, you're saying, is up it a little bit to where maybe we can have some extra for some unforeseen claims next year?
Yes. In fact, I'm glad you mentioned that because the next budget amendment is for health insurance, and I won't go off of that just yet. But last year, at the end of the year, we had to appropriate a little extra money for health insurance because we were running short at the end of the year, and that allowed us to put about $200,000 into fund balance. Well, I'm using that $200,000 or part of that fund balance to help balance the internal service fund that is our health insurance fund on the next budget amendment. So this may help add to the fund balance for the health insurance, but it may also just cover claims.
Okay. And then, of course, we all know that health insurance or claims or, you know, to pay for this stuff's going up. But is there any—it's just a sign of the times, or is there anything we can do to—
Yes, I think there are a number of things we can do, and we're going to be looking at them over the next year or so to see if there are ways we can reduce the cost. I think that we are self-insured, like I said, but there are entities that are going through insurance companies, and they're seeing an increase in their health insurance costs, too. A lot of double-digit increases this year.
We've really not had a lot of increases. I mean, I can remember several years ago, we had something like this happen. You know, the wellness clinic has kept costs down.
I think it has. It has kept costs down, that's true.
Yeah, that's been a real positive. It's been a real positive.
And we've done a few things. We, we offered certain generic prescriptions free of charge to encourage people to take the lower-cost prescriptions versus the name-brand prescriptions. And there's a number of other things that we're doing and a number of things that we're going to be looking at, like I said, over the course of the year, see if we can reduce some, maybe some programs, or some additional programs, like the Wellness Clinic that we might be able to use. Telemedicine is one we're looking at to hopefully reduce the cost of health insurance in the future.
I know, I'm on the HHS Board, and they're doing several things up there, several programs to help with wellness. So, I know there's a lot going on, a lot of initiatives trying to keep the costs down. But how, how long have we been with the same insurance company?
We have been self-insured.
Or self-insured, that's what I meant.
For at least 18 years. We were with the Blue Cross, that was, the state insurance had Blue Cross 20 years or so ago. And we went, went self-insured. There's a, there's a certain point where it's cheaper to just pay the claims than it is to pay the insurance company for them to pay the claims. And we hit that point about 18, 19 years ago.
Do you still think that that's, I mean, I mean, it's still to our advantage to stay self-insured?
I think it is, and we're going to look into that also. But if we were to go out to Blue Cross, for example, to see it, have them give us a price, they're going to look at our claims, and they're going to see how much we've been paying for our claims, knowing that they might incur those same amounts. So, they may very well come in with a little bit higher premium.
So, it's kind of between rock and hard place.
It is. Health insurance is going up everywhere.
Yeah.
Prescription drugs, every.
And, you know, I guess it's, it's changing, you know, people with all the uncertainty in the, the insurance, well, they just can't get a good system going. But like other, of course, that would be kind of like the state insurance policies or whatever, which was with the private insurance policy. But like if there's other self-insured entities, would there, is there advantages to joining those to see if that would be any cost savings or?
There might be. I think that everything's on the table at this point.
I'm just wondering, you know, thinking.
Some of the, some of the premiums that are lower than what our costs are typically have fewer benefits. So, we're going to have to weigh the benefits for our employees versus the cost. I mean, that's always a trade-off.
And I think that, Joel, you are going to be looking into that, or at least as soon as we get a, if we get a new county manager. I mean, you have to constantly be aware of that every year, what, what type of plan you have and whether self-insurance is the best way to go and the costs and.
And I think, I think it's important to realize that as medical costs continue to go up, there's only a couple of things you can do. One is increase the amount that you're going to pay in premiums or to look at the benefits that we're providing. And neither one of those is going to be very popular. But that's what a lot of other counties and cities are having to do right now and look at the level of benefit that we can provide and continue to keep it within the amount that we're, they're budgeting for that.
The, one of the things that the county does and does for their employees as well is that the dependent coverage that the employees pay, I, I don't, I believe we're losing, we're actually losing money on that because the employee, what we pay for each employee is actually higher than what we pay for the dependence coverage.
That's true. It is somewhat subsidized.
And, but, I mean, if you, if that premium is so high for the employees, all their money's going to the, to cover their dependent coverage for their insurance, and they don't have it to take home. So, you kind of have to balance that as well. It's, it's just, it's a problem for not just us, but I think everybody. But I wish I had an answer.
I do, too.
Okay. Did you get, you got to get to the $900,000 one, right?
Yes, I've got two more budget amendments. The $900,000 is actually the Internal Service Fund. That's our health insurance fund. And I'm increasing it $900,000. $700,000 of that is coming from the General Fund. I do have some other revenue coming in, some of the retire and other payments and the dependent payment amounts are coming in a little bit higher than what we had expected. And I'm taking $100,000 of the fund balance that we had in there from last year to get up to the $900,000 for this budget amendment.
Any questions? Okay.
And the last one I have here is a $5 million budget amendment. This is the Haywood Health Authority for the sale of the hospital. You remember that we had a contribution to us of $3 million a few months ago. They have released another $5 million for us to put aside to give to the Haywood Health Foundation, Haywood Healthcare Foundation for health initiatives. So, maybe with this money, they'll be able to come up with some initiatives that'll help our health insurance cost. But the $5 million has come in, so I'm putting this in the budget so that we can, we can turn around and pay this to the Haywood Healthcare Authority.
Right. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Julie. All right. That completes the consent agenda. If no one has any questions about that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Got a motion? Second by Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. We do not have any old business this evening, so we'll move to new business. First item of new business is to provide information concerning the Selective Service System Local Boards. Chris Castro is here with us this evening, Lieutenant Colonel of the North Carolina Army National Guard. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd also like to thank Mr. Mashburn for adding me to the agenda. Originally, I was going to be in the public comments section, but I appreciate the grant of a little extra time, and I try not to be too long here. I'm what they call a traditional drilling reservist. I drill in Raleigh. I'm in, I'm a Lieutenant Colonel in the Army National Guard. And I, the current position I hold is I'm a Reserve Force Officer for the Selective Service. And when I tell folks, they ask me, what do I, what do I do in the Guard? I say, I work for the Selective Service. And they ask me, isn't that the draft board? And I tell them, indeed, that's what it is. The Selective Service pays the various reserve components, Army Reserve, Naval Reserve, National Guard, Coast Guard Reserve, Air Force Reserve, to be Reserve Force Officers. And what they are tasked, they have tasked us to do is each county, actually nationwide, but in North Carolina specifically, each county has a local board comprised of five individuals. They are civilians, they're volunteers. And as, as it turns out, in some of the less populated counties in this area, for example, Haywood, Jackson, and Macon Counties combined to make a local board. And what I'm tasked with doing as a National Guard person is to recruit civilians to fill these vacancies when they occur. As, as it so happens, in Haywood County, I have two authorized positions and I have two vacancies. So, I'm looking to possibly get some assistance to try to fill these vacancies. What a local board member does specifically is in the case, now, we don't anticipate this ever happening, and I tell folks that we fought Afghanistan and Iraq with an all-volunteer force. So, the chances of a draft ever happening are probably slim, but this mechanism is in place in case of national emergency or in case we, we ever need folks. But what would happen is in the case of a national emergency, the Department of Defense would tell Selective Service, hey, we need young folks. As it currently stands, males, right now, only males, age 18 to 25 are required to register when they hit 18, but they have up until 25 to register for Selective Service. We all did it when we were 18. But the Department of Defense would tell the Selective Service, hey, we need young folks in case of a national emergency. Some of those young folks would be called, they'd go and get a physical. At some point in time, they estimate a washout rate of about 65% would not be eligible to serve in the military. But some of these young folks would get a draft notice if, if this ever were to happen. And invariably, some of those young folks may feel convicted, hey, I can't be a combatant, you know? And they call those folks conscientious objectors. We just call them COs, but they're a conscientious objector. They're opposed to war in any form, opposed to taking life. And so, they anticipate that some segment of these folks called to serve, if that ever happened, would declare that they're a conscientious objector. So, the job of the local board would be, they would come together and meet, and they would hear these claims. They'd bring that young person in that said, hey, I can't serve. And they would actually conduct an interview as, as a board. They would convene, and they'd hear the person's claim, and they would decide whether they meet the criteria or they do not meet the criteria. And also, along those lines, we, we train them to do that, but they're also tasked with hearing folks that are ministers of religion also are subject to that. So, if a person claims, hey, I'm, I'm in a religion, I can't serve, they would also have consideration for not being eligible. But what they anticipate invariably are there's some outstanding religions out there that might not meet the criteria of a mainstream religion. You may have heard of a, a group of folks called the Postafarians that they claim their religion, so the local board would ferret out those claims. But my job as a National Guard member in the Selective Service is to try to fill these vacancies. And I have vacancies statewide, in counties statewide. But I'm here tonight just to ask for a little assistance. I think I passed in this way a while back some board member brochures about what a board member does, the actual duties, some business cards and some applications. And I'd just like to ask the Commissioners if they know of somebody, or maybe know of somebody that was interested in serving on a local board, to please let me know. I'm going to leave some contact information. But the requirements are really very minimal. They fill out an application. I conduct a quick interview. We forward that to the Selective Service System down in Atlanta, the regional office. Once they do a little bit of their due diligence, then they forward that information to the Governor's Office of North Carolina. And the Governor's Office does their share of due diligence as well. And this person, once they become approved to be a member of a local board, they get a certificate appointing them from the Governor that says, hey, they're a member of a local board. And the time requirement's very minimal. We actually come out and do some training. And Selective Service has actually moved to a computer-based training model. So, when I get a name of a person and they get through all the due diligence and become a member of a local board, Selective Service simply emails them a PowerPoint. They work that on their own time. It's not very time requi, the time requirements are very minimal. And they essentially, once they're appointed to the board, the requirements, they don't have to do a whole lot. Once a year, I'll contact them, make sure I have name and address and phone number and email still valid. Other than that, that's really the, the only requirement. And a person that's civic-minded and patriotic-minded as well.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions? Candy, do you think maybe what we could do is post this on website, just the information he's provided? We could at least have it on our website. Of course, you had some airtime this evening, can't guarantee you how many viewers you're going to have, but at least it'll get that out there. And of course, the Commissioners are now informed of that. And let me, I had one question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have, from the time you turn 18 until you're 25, to register?
That's correct. You do.
So, you could wait till you were 24, 25 years old to register?
In theory, you could. There are some benefits you lose out on sometimes when they fill out a FAFSA to go to student loan.
Right.
So, there, there might be some pushback. If, if they're not registered, there's some benefits they could lose out on. So, we, we encourage all folks, and the Selective Service does, that once you hit 18, and now with driver's license legislation, a lot of times, Selective Service reaches out to you and sends you an application in the mail. Folks no longer go, they really, by and large, do not go to the post office. They get something sent to them electronically in electronic age.
And it's males, 18 to 25?
Correct. Currently, it's, it's only males.
Okay.
I had a couple of people ask me about that recently, and I said, hey, you know, if you feel strongly enough about that, that's a, a matter for your, your Senator or Congressperson. But yeah, currently, it's only males.
How long does the person serve?
The appointment is for 20 years.
20 years?
Right. And I've had folks that have served 20 and retired. And then we have folks, of course, that move different parts of the state. And if they move somewhere else or relocate, we do our best to assist them in getting on a local board, maybe where they are going to. I had a gentleman recently move to South Carolina, and we got in touch with the regional office, handles those states, and got him on a board, moved him from the board he was currently on to the board in South Carolina. But to answer your questions, 20-year appointment.
What's the time requirement per year?
I would say it's really, the, the, initially, it's a, the training session used to be when we come out live, it was an eight-hour training session, one time. But they've gone to this computer-based model where it's probably just a couple hours. And then annually, they send them a renewal computer-based training, and I'd say maybe two hours a year. So, very minimal time requirement. And, and they don't meet, there is, there are no meetings. They're, they're just at, they're a contingency factor, just in case.
And the only real time that they would meet is if they had to have some interview people or?
Correct. If a draft ever were to be reinstated and folks got draft notices and filed CO forms, then the boards would convene. And then, still, it would only be a part-time thing. We would anticipate that they would still work whatever civilian employment they have. It'd probably be an evening requirement, maybe a couple times a month.
Any other questions?
I did not realize you still had to register for the draft.
Yes, sir. And, and we actually go to various functions sometimes to just get the word out, and folks, some folks didn't realize that. But it's, it's, it's behind the scenes because they send things out electronically now for young folks. So, young folks don't go to the post office anymore. It's, you know, in the information age, it's kind of seamless and behind the scenes. But I appreciate your time, letting me come and speak. And you have a beautiful courthouse. It's phenomenal. So, thanks so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel Castro.
You've educated us.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Next is Request Approval of Revisions to the Operating Procedures of the Haywood County Health and Human Services Agency Board. Ira Dove is with us, our Health and Human Services Agency Director. Evening, Ira.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This is a request to approve the amendments they're proposing to the operating procedures for the board. This board approved the original procedures back when the Health and Human Services Agency was formed in 2013. Most of the amendments, and these have been gone over by the county manager and the county attorney. In addition to the Health and Human Service Agency Board, most of the amendments are technical amendments. You'll notice there are a few words where they batted for the county commissioners, a little clarifying language, some statutory reference language throughout most of the matters. They've added a little language to clarify and update. This would be over. Under Section H. 1B2, the Nominations and Personnel Committee, to codify kind of the process that was used to select myself as the director in the need or the event to select another director. There's also another clarification towards the end suggested to make it clear that as a procedure for amending these items in the future, they would have the legal review before being brought back, before the full Health and Human Services Board, the legal review by the county. Everything else, in my opinion, falls just basically into technical language. And they did add some clarification to make it clear that the subcommittees were actually public bodies so that they would be subject to the open records law. Because that point of question came up earlier. But mostly, we're dealing with technical amendments.
Commissioners, have any questions? Mashburn, Mr. Kirian, any comments, questions in regards to this? Everybody's okay with it? Your board's good with it?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions to the operating procedures of the Haywood County Health and Human Services Agency as represented by Ira Dove, the HSA Director, and as shown in Attachment 9. Does that move? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Ira.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of resolution for the adoption of the Smoky Mountain Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Greg Chupin, Emergency Services Director is with us.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And I actually printed this entire regional plan, and it wouldn't fit into your agenda packet. I apologize for that, but the size of it, because we have a regional planner, we're part of a regional planning committee, but NXC is the Haywood County Annex, and it was provided to you in the shared drive for the Commissioners for your review, if you were able to do that. Did want to spend just a few minutes, give you just a small summary or details of the plan. A hazard mitigation plan is required by FEMA in order to, for us to receive disaster assistance if a disaster or when a disaster could occur here in Haywood County, as it has in the past. When we have an approved plan, then we are eligible for that type of assistance. It has to be updated every five years. You'll recall, some of you were on the board five years ago. We did a lot of work to the original plan, which was five years ago, to make sure the language was what the Commissioners wanted it to be. As a matter of fact, I believe we brought the plan before the Commissioners about three times, before you guys were able to get the language the way we needed it. So that was great, and we had a lot of good work on it back then, and so this is more of just an update to the plan. The participating counties and the municipalities therein are Cherokee, Swain, Haywood, Jackson, Graham, and the Reservation of Eastern Band, Cherokee Indians. So just a tad about the plan, all of the towns except for Canton have already approved this plan that you see in front of you. The only exception is the town of Canton, which they feel like their board will approve it this Thursday evening. So all of the municipalities in the county, if you see fit, would have this completed by Thursday, and we could submit it to FEMA for the final. It requires no funds or no obligations on behalf of the county if you approve the plan. It is simply a good mitigation plan. So basically, hazard mitigation is, you know, taking a look at what hazards are present here in Haywood County, and particularly natural disasters or natural hazards that we look at. For example, major winter storms, flash floods, tornadoes, wildfire risk, and other things associated. We take those risks and hazards, and then we are able to kind of balance those risks and hazards against the capabilities that we have. And that becomes, you know, the little thing that we can work on. What are the actions we can take as a community, or as the four municipalities in the county, to begin to look at and continue to look at? A great example of this is, you know, the county's participation between planning and the county commissioners when it comes to the floodplain inundation mapping systems and floodplain plans. That's a good example of mitigation. So those are the things that drives our strategy. Again, at the end of NXC, you can look at that, and it tells us a little bit about what the actions we may take in the next five years could be. Just a few examples of those are to continue participation in the National Floodplain Mapping System, of course, but also some things such as taking a look at the wildfire risk we have here in Haywood County. Taking a look at the communities that could be impacted from a severe wildfire, such as what happened last year when we came out of the Great Smokies with that wildfire that burned over Gatlinburg and Sevier County. Can we have meetings with those communities and establish a relationship between them and the U.S. Forest Service and the North Carolina Forest Service, and maybe come up with some strategies to help their communities be safer? So we're really going to take a serious look at this mitigation plan that was established for us, and see what we can do in the next few years to make sure our communities are safer. And we can't take away the threat of a hazard or a risk, but we can take steps to mitigate or look into reducing the harm that it could take to our communities. And so what we're ultimately asking you to do is to adopt that resolution that you have before you in the attachment, so that we can move this forward to FEMA and begin our work.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of Greg?
This is a requirement by FEMA.
Yes, sir.
Do we have this?
It is.
We don't get no funding if we don't have it, if I heard that.
Not eligible for disaster.
For example, if we had a winter stormer, not now, but if we had maybe some flash flooding or something that occurred, and a federal declaration occurred, if we did not have an approved FEMA plan in place, we would not be eligible for disaster assistance if we don't have an approved plan.
Well, then, I will entertain a motion that the resolution be adopted, the resolution that resolves that we adopt the Smoky Mountain Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update, and we agree to take such other official action as may be reasonable and necessary to carry out the proposed actions of the plan. And the motion would include the adoption of the full resolution as set out as Exhibit Ten. Does that move?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Greg, just a question on that. Who come up with the updates and the plan? I mean, do you have a committee, or if you don't mind?
We did. We had a committee that was comprised of the town officials of each, usually the town manager or the town administrator, as well as myself. We went to several meetings, but ultimately, because it's a regional plan, we used federal dollars, or grant dollars, to be able to hire a consultant that took a look at our demographics of the entire region and pulled this plan together and helped guide us when we did have those community meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Greg. Next, we got request approval of fireworks displays. Our Fire Marshal, Andrew Messer, is with us this evening. Andrew, I'll let you read off the fireworks requests.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. We have requests of approval for fireworks. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to read this off here. I don't have it memorized. For Chestnut Ridge, for June 3rd, June 9th, June 23rd, and June 24th, and this is the event center in Dutch Cove. For the town of Maggie Valley, for July the 4th, for Lake Junalauska on July the 4th, and for the town of Canton on July the 5th.
All right. Commissioners, any questions of?
How is the fireworks that have been at Chestnut Ridge so far? I mean, still, no problems? No, we're not hearing anything from the public, so everything must be okay.
Yes, sir. I haven't heard anything either from our side.
And of course, I assume that when we approve that request for Chestnut Ridge, that we continue to abide by the same limitations that we put on that.
Absolutely. He did say that all the shows would be done before 10 o'clock, as requested earlier.
Okay. Any other questions? You guys sure you want to let them have fireworks?
Yes.
This year? I'm just kidding.
Why not?
Well, I believe the Chestnut Ridge was 15, 20 seconds. I just can't see how anybody could get upset with 20 seconds of noise.
I was just, I was talking about Lake Junalauska and Canton. I was kidding. I too. All right. Is it okay to approve all these together?
Yes, sir. I see no reason why not, unless somebody wants to pull them out and have a separate vote.
All right. I'll entertain a motion that the firework displays that Fire Marshal Andrew Messer presented for Chestnut Ridge, the town of Maggie, Lake Junalauska, and town of Canton be approved. So moved. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of proclamation declaring May 24, 2018, is the day of the fallen officer memorial ceremony. Chief Deputy Jeff Haynes is with us this evening. Jeff?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
I bring before you an annual event that, due to a conflict of interest last week, I wanted to go ahead and say congratulations and thank you to our EMS for this week of being EMS Appreciation Week. Last week was actually Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Week, but due to a conflict in scheduling, like I say, with Raleigh, we had to bump it a week. So what our plans are to move forward with our annual Fallen Officer Ceremony on Thursday, the 24th, this Thursday at 5:30 p.m. here in this venue. But with that, I come before you, bring before you a proclamation today for adoption. Says, "Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated that there be a National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and whereas the members of the Sheriff's Office and police departments serve an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of the citizens of Haywood County, and whereas it is important to recognize the duties and responsibilities of law enforcement officers and agencies, and to express appreciation for the contributions made by law enforcement officers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Haywood County, North Carolina, does hereby call upon all citizens to observe May 24, 2018, and recognize those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, state, and country. This adopted the 21st day of May, 2018."
All right. Commissioners, any questions about that proclamation that was just read?
No questions, just a comment that anybody's welcome to come. I mean, we're having that this Thursday, so just so the public knows, anybody's welcome.
All right. What time is it?
It starts at 5:30.
5:30?
5:30 right here. Yes, we certainly invite anybody and everybody that is willing to come and wants to come. Certainly welcome all.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the proclamation recognizing the fallen officer memorial ceremony scheduled for May 24, 2018. Over moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next, we have request approval of appointment of Benjamin Wilder to the Fairgrounds Board. Joel Mashburn, our county manager.
Mr. Chairman, we have a letter recommending that the Library Board, by consensus, agree to this applicant and recommends it to the county commissioners. It is Benjamin Wilder. He is a resident of the county for a half of a year, but evidently has been very active and is well-known by the people on the Fairgrounds Board, and so the recommendation does come from them that you approve this.
Okay. Commissioners, we have a recommendation from the Fairgrounds Board to appoint Benjamin Wilder to the Fairgrounds Board. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Wilder to that board unless there's any discussion.
Our board approves him. I appreciate him applying. And this will be for Nancy Davis, who continued to serve because we didn't have enough applicants, so he'll be replacing her for this term. And she's done a great job.
All right. We thank Nancy for the job she's done, and I will take that as your motion.
I'll move that we approve him.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. All right. Next, we have a request approval of appointment of one position to the Haywood Community College Board of Trustees. We had two applicants, did an excellent job earlier today, and so we need to vote for one of the two of them. The applicants were Jim Blythe and Terry Kelly. Will be voting for one of those. Right. So Jim Blythe will be appointed to the Haywood Community College Board of Trustees. Need to do that by motion or the vote? Take care of that. I keep, always forget that.
I think you should go ahead and vote.
Okay. We'll move to appoint Jim Blythe, who survived the vote between the Commissioners, to be appointed to the Haywood Community College Board of Trustees. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Kevin Mike seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes according to vote, I guess. All right. That's the end of this meeting or what's on the agenda. Does anyone have anything else for this evening?
We'll reconvene at 2:00.
That's right. We will have a work session, 2:00 Thursday, Paragon Parkway, and everyone is welcome to come. If there's nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Over moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.